Portage County Board of Supervisors meeting, recorded November 1st, 2023.
Five o'clock. I will call to order the Portage County County Board meeting for Wednesday, November 1st. We'll start this evening with, uh, your call.
We have eighteen supervisors present, uh, three supervisors remote, Supervisor Fritz, Hakla, and Pataki. We have three supervisors excused: Chair Haga, Supervisor Jakowski, Supervisor Morrow, and Supervisor Jankowski is absent.
Pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will be doing the invocation this evening. Let us pray. As we look to finalize our 2024 county budget this evening, help us do our best for our citizens and taxpayers here in Portage County. Lord, please provide help to those impacted by war across the globe. Help to bring peace and patience to all. Please keep safe all those who offer aid to us in our time of need. Lord, help our farmers to have a safe and bountiful harvest. We ask this in your name. Amen.
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 This time we'll take a motion to adjourn the annual meeting. Motion by Dubek, second by Lattick. All in favor with aye?
Aye.
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 And opposed, we will start our public notice. Do we have a sign up sheet? Public? Just call out to make sure, uh, there is any public that would like to speak at the public hearing. If not, I'll take a motion to reconvene the annual meeting. Moved by Jakowski, second by Dubek. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And opposed, we are back to our annual meeting. Public notice: Members of the public who wish to address the committee, uh, address the county board on specific agenda items must register their request at this time with such comments subject to the reasonable control of the county board chair as set forth in Robert's Rules of Order. Do we have any public? Seeing none, correspondence?
Portage County Board of Supervisors Department Heads Holiday Party Memo.
Item three, approval of October 3rd, 2023 minutes. Moved by Splinter, second by Maresi. Any corrections or comments? All in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And opposed, minutes approved. Approval of October 10th, 2023 minutes. Moved by S- Pataki, second by Soslevich. Any corrections or comments? All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And opposed, minutes approved. Resolution and ordinances, number five, adoption of 2024 Portage County budget and property tax levy apportionment for the 2023 tax levy payable in 2024. Moved by Soik, second by Lattick. Discussion.
I would like to make a motion, please. Supervisor Hakla.
Supervisor Hakla, go ahead.
I would like to make a motion to amend the proposed budget. If you reference page fourteen of the package, and I believe all the supervisors probably got a letter from the Town of Grant. We, uh, the Town of Grant and myself brought this before the Finance Committee. The budget states a countywide ambulance service. Well, it should say countywide ambulance service except for the Town of Grant. And it came up during the Finance Committee meeting that the Town of Grant residents, and I'm a resident, I'm the treasurer of the Town of Grant, we are charged on the Portage County levy seventy-eight thousand dollars for an ambulance service that the county did not provide to us because we're outside the fifteen-minute access from ambulances. We have had to negotiate our own ambulance contract with the United Ambulance here for forty-one thousand dollars. So, we're paying forty-one thousand dollars to get our own ambulance service. The county is charging us seventy-eight thousand for something we don't get. My constituents are really upset. And I asked my fellow supervisors, wouldn't your constituents be equally upset if they're paying three times for what we can get for one, one payment? I'm asking for the county to reimburse the Town of Grant the forty-one thousand that we're paying, you're still ahead because you're charging us seventy-eight thousand. And I hope you, uh, can appreciate our stance on this. Thank you.
Motion to amend by Hakla, second by Maresi. Discussion.
Mr. Chair, I guess I'd like to probably comment upon some of the statements, uh, so that's, I guess in my estimation, not necessarily an accurate, um, characterization. The county does have a countywide ambulance system. The Town of Grant is included in that, and, uh, they have elected not to participate in the countywide ambulance system. They've decided to pay for their own ambulance system. There is actually a legal case history between the Town of Grant suing the county over this very reason. And that decision was granted, or in favor of the county by a circuit court. The Town of Grant appealed that decision to the Court of Appeals. The Court of Appeals determined that, and concluded, that the county does have the authority to tax all the residents of the county for the countywide ambulance system, rejected the town's arguments, and the provision that talks about the town contracting for ambulance system, um, that statute talks about unless it's provided for by another person. In this case, the court found that the county is a person for those purposes. So, the county does provide a countywide ambulance system, which does include the Town of Grant. The Town of Grant is elected to opt out of that and contract for the own service.
Supervisor Maresi.
I, I just have a question or clarification. If the, if the Town of Grant opted out, I mean, that's a fact, um, why would they opt out if we actually have a full countywide system? But from what I understand, we also have an ordinance that we have to have a fifteen-minute response time of some sort. Is that, is that true?
Not that I'm aware of. I think that's the town, that, I think that's the town's conclusion that they found that they, they made a determination ambulance would take that long to get to Grant.
Sheriff Lucas, would you like to speak?
So, everybody's aware, in 2015, we took over the EMS in regards to the ambulance providers, in regards to negotiating contracts. And at that time, we did not have a ambulance for the southern half, basically, because it was Stevens Point and Amherst. Uh, so we saw a need for that, and the county board saw a need for that. So, in 2018, we've got a ambulance in Plover, right at 54 and B. Town of Grant has never, um, utilized the opportunities that the countywide system has. We actually approached, um, the, the outlying areas in regards to other providers wanting to see if they wanted to come into this, but, um, the providers did not because our, our county system has a medical director that oversees patient care reports, um, quality of care, uh, the double paramedic system, all these things that the other providers did not want us to, um, dictate. They also didn't want us to dictate the billing. So, you have to understand that this countywide system, um, has the providers that the county board and the county has deemed fit. I am in charge of moving resources as needed in regards to where, um, we see fit if, if call volumes increase. But the Town of Grant, and I talked to the supervisor about this, has never even spoke with, uh, the Village of Plover in regards to response times. So, if you look at 54 and B to the Town of Grant, um, I would say that's in their response times.
Could I, could I reply to that, please?
Go ahead, Supervisor Hakla.
So, uh, from what I understand, there is an ordinance that you have to be within fifteen minutes response time. I spoke, I did speak last week with the deputy chief of the fire department in Plover, and he said, yes, he didn't think they could get to the town, uh, we got an elementary school, the Town of Grant Elementary School. He says, when he looked at it online, it's more, it's probably twenty minutes away. We've got, our biggest subdivision is even further away. We can't, he, he's willing to come and talk to the Town of Grant and do a new speed study, but there's, there's no way they can get here in fifteen minutes, and that's part of the county ordinance. That's why the Town of Grant, we would, why would we not accept entry into the Portage County if it was in fifteen minutes? We don't want our elementary school children to be so far away from ambulance. And it's, 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 the time studies show that they can't get here in time. It, you know, it's, 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 to me, every supervisor, if you, my, my, my residents don't like the fact that they're paying three times for an ambulance service. Their question is, how could we get it for half the price of what Portage County is charging us anyhow? It's just, you know, this goes back before my time. The Town of Grant did take it to court. They wanted to take it to the Wisconsin Supreme Court, but it would have cost them more than they were paying for the ambulance service, so they dropped the whole issue. All we're asking is, give us the money, half of what you're taking from the residents to help us pay for ambulance service. We don't have much of a tax base here in the Town of Grant. Thank you.
Supervisor Olkey.
Um, so I just would look for clarification on verbiage here. So, the mailing that we got, um, identifies it as a protocol established by the EMS. Um, so is, is it a protocol, or is it actually in the ordinance, um, Portage County ordinance? And then is EMS using fifteen minutes as a best practice? Or is that in some, um, criteria that we should look deeper into?
Mr. Chair, I'm, I'm not aware of any fifteen-minute provision within our ordinance. I just did some searching to, I find no such reference to that. I think there may have been a study at some point, but there's nothing in our ordinances to talk about fifteen minutes.
Sheriff Lucas.
I believe it's best practice under the, uh, contracts for the three providers that they try to do this, but you also have to realize Stevens Point is the provider for Roshell High School, Plover is the provider for Amherst, or Almond High School, uh, which are definitely further distance than, than the Town of Grant school.
Supervisor Gifford.
Yeah, I, when I got the letter from, uh, Town of Grant, I immediately had the question, do we have any data evidence of the actual time it would take to the, you know, from the Plover-based ambulance out to, let's say, a reasonably far corner of, of that town? I, I was wondering that, if we have that evidence anywhere?
Sheriff says we do not.
Um, I, I've actually talked with the, uh, Village of Plover in regards to their EMS to, to talk with the Town of Grant in regards to their wishes, in regards to their, their response times, what they were asking for. But no, I, I just know that distance-wise, in regards to, for law enforcement from that area, um, to Town of Belmont, Town of Almond, um, the outlines for Town of Albon are a lot further, um, that, that we have to go.
I would even say there's parts of Town of Plain and maybe parts of Town of Carson that will not, nobody will get there in fifteen minutes.
Yeah.
All through the Town of Dewey.
Supervisor Soslevich.
I just looked it up on MapQuest. It was from the fire station in Town of Grant, Town Hall's, fourteen miles, seventeen minutes, due to the speed limit.
Supervisor Jankowski.
Over the years, I've been on the, um, ambulance service, uh, contracting issues. Prior to this time, what we did as a protocol set by the medical director, fifteen minutes was a protocol. It was not an ordinance. So, that is the issue that we are looking at, is a protocol set by EMS that they attempt to make those within fifteen minutes.
Supervisor Jakowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Town of Belmont, of course, as Sheriff Lucas brought up, is probably the furthest away from ambulance service, and we too complain about response time. There's no doubt that there's a need for better response times, but there's a lot of needs in this world. We don't like it. There's no straight road from Amherst to services. What we need to do probably as communities is promote our first responders programs much harder because they're the ones that are going to save your life. And, and, and again, Sheriff Lucas knows, many of you sitting here have known that I've complained about response times to the Town of Belmont over and over again. But again, we do have to realize that it's the first responders who are going to save your life till that ambulance, in our outlying area, that are going to save our lives, each and every one of our lives. Whether you live in Stevens Point, maybe you're out hunting in Belmont, or you're out rummage sailing, or, or just enjoying the, the scenic views of Belmont. We do need better response times, and, and hopefully that comes someday. But we do have to promote our first responders because those are the ones that are going to save our lives. Thank you.
I'd agree with Supervisor Jakowski as far as, I was witness to a train fell fatality this year. I was the first one on the scene, and we had responders there within minutes, and it did take the ambulance, I would bet at least twenty to twenty-five minutes to get to the scene. And, uh, as far as somebody that lives in the rural areas, I can't help but promote and try to find more young people to, uh, get involved in being first responders. Supervisor Peterson.
I agree also. We have, out to the farm, we have had, uh, a few ambulance calls. First responders are there very shortly. And when the ambulance does come from Portage County, that is almost a emergency room on wheels. We've got number one service here in Portage County. I still say that, yes, your first responders are your first line of help, and we got to promote them all the more.
Any other discussion? If not, we are going to be voting on the amendment, uh, for the Town of Grant. Want to do this online? So, the amendment is to, uh, I don't want to word this correctly, is to take Town of Grant's tax levy for ambulance response out? Is that correct?
No, I believe that the motion is to...
Reimburse.
Yeah.
Reimburse the forty...
There's a better way to say it.
Yeah.
It would be to increase the EMS...
Levy for the rest of the county.
Increase.
Here, you can use my, or quote.
This one will work. Um, it'll, it is to increase, um, the EMS property tax levy by forty-one thousand four hundred and ninety-three dollars, and also increase the ambulance provider contract budget by forty-one thousand four hundred and ninety-three dollars. So, it would actually increase the overall tax levy.
Pretty clear on that?
Is, does that mean that, because I believe you said something about reimbursing the Town of Grant, is that...
The payment would be to the Town of Grant, so the forty-one thousand four hundred and ninety-three would be paid to the Town of Grant for their ambulance provider.
Thank you for the clarification.
You are welcome.
So, all in favor of the amendment, vote yes, and if not, vote no. We ready?
Yep.
Yes.
Supervisor Pataki.
No.
Supervisor Jankowski.
No.
You want to give him the money? No.
Supervisor Fritz?
No.
Supervisor Hakla?
Yes.
Amendment fails two to twenty.
Back to the adoption of the budgets as posted. Supervisor Lattick.
Mr. Chair, do we need to, uh, put a motion on the floor for the Public Safety Committee authorizing a shift differential? I'll make that motion then.
Second by Barry Jakowski. Discussion. Supervisor Maresi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have a question about process. I realize we are probably up with a time crunch, and that's why it didn't come to HR, but normally this would come through HR first, and then we would have a discussion and then present it to the board. Is there any insight, other than the time crunch, as to why it didn't show up sooner?
Laura, would you like to speak to this?
The amendment before you is just the dollar amount to, to amend the budget. To actually approve what's being requested, does have to go to HR Committee and then the county executive, which, um, requests for the wages have gone to the county executive. Um, he is waiting to see if this amendment passes, I believe, before, um, to take all the information into consideration before making his, um, decision. It is on the HR Committee packet for tomorrow.
And then one other clarifying, um, question. It, in the, the amendment, it says for some, uh, staff, why not all staff for the sheriff's department? If the sheriff can answer that, or, or Mr. Jankowski, Supervisor Jankowski.
Sheriff Lucas, since you're up.
Wish the air conditioning was working. So, in regards to this, um, I think, so I want to thank the HR and finance directors for, uh, working with, with me on this. Uh, about three months ago, um, the state, um, imposed a huge wage increase for state corrections officers, which in turn, um, kicked over to the counties now, and our counties, our surrounding counties, our current wage, starting wage is about three dollars an hour or so behind. Um, this brings it to about two dollars, um, behind, but, um, it's palatable because we have other benefits here in Portage County in regards to overtime, um, shift differential and items like this. Um, the reason why it was brought up through the budget amendment is because that's the to, what I was told to do, um, through this. I, I would have much rather had this done a long time ago, but we wanted to work through the budget process and, and do it this way. So, your question again was?
The amendment says for some, certain staff, but not all staff, and I'm wondering, why aren't we just asking for all staff since we are so far behind and it's an important service?
Well, what, what we looked at is, we looked at the comparables for, from our supervisors, our command staff, to our frontline workers, our corrections. So, there was a big gap between our start, um, corrections to our, our top corrections. And in June, I asked for this to be placed on the agenda for us to review, to see where we're at for, with the surrounding counties, because it is a fluid, um, um, process right now in regards to what is going on. And, and as, uh, the HR director can attest, I mean, we're having people searching now because they can go in, you know, three dollars an hour or more over in, uh, Wapak or Wood County, they're gonna, they're gonna jump ship because they only got ten miles to drive. So, we are trying to retain and also attract staff in regards to the, the wages that we're offering, along with some of the benefit packages that Portage County offers.
Other discussion? If not, a yes vote would be to approve, uh, what's in the packet, it would be pages eleven and twelve, and a no vote would be to not approve it. Ready? So, again, yes...
Are we ready, Mr. Chair?
Spoke.
It's good. Supervisor Pataki?
Yes.
Supervisor Jankowski?
Yes.
Supervisor Fritz?
Yes.
Supervisor Hakla?
Sorry, I'm, uh, yes.
Amendment carries.
Back to the adoption of the budget with the amendments.
Would you like me to read through the what's changed?
Yes.
Um, in terms of the resolution that you're now adopting, um, it would change in, let's see. In the fiscal note, in the first, uh, line after the table, this resolution adopts the 2024 Portage County budget, the new number would be one hundred thirty-four million seven hundred ninety-five thousand six hundred seven dollars. And that number is also repeated in the be it further resolved. And again, that is one hundred thirty-four million seven hundred ninety-five thousand six hundred and seven dollars. Agreed, Tricia? Okay. It does not change the tax levy at all. The amendment was funded with fund balance for the first year. We'll have to figure it out in the 2025 budget.
Additional discussion on the budget? Seeing none, all in favor, vote yes, and opposed, no.
Are you ready, Mario?
Oh, I'll share it. It's ready. Supervisor Pataki?
Yes.
Supervisor Jankowski?
Yes.
Supervisor Fritz? Did you hear him?
He's muted.
Supervisor Fritz?
Yes.
And Supervisor Hakla? Motion carries.
Item six, authorizing 2023 budget amendments and transfers.
This is resolution one sixty-six dash twenty twenty-two dash twenty twenty-four submitted by the Finance Committee. This resolution does require a two-thirds supermajority vote.
Motion from Dubek, second from Lattick. Motion from Dubek, second from Lattic. Discussion. There's no other discussion, all in favor with aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries. Item seven, establishing fund balance classifications as required by GASB Statement Number 54, Fund Balance Reporting and Governmental Fund Type Definitions.
This is Resolution 167-2022-2024, submitted by the Finance Committee.
Moved by Soick, second by Dodge. Discussion. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor with aye.
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 And opposed? Motion carries. Item eight, approving and authorizing a cooperative service agreement between Portage County, the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources, the United States Department of Agricultural, Animal Plant Health Inspection Service, Wildlife Services.
This is Resolution 168-2022-2024, submitted by the Land and Water Conservation Committee and Planning and Zoning Committee.
Moved by Barry Chakowski, second by Splinter. Discussion. Supervisor Chakowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a little background on this, this is the contract between Portage County and the DNR to approve wildlife damage. It is a self-funded program that is funded by the sale of deer licenses, the extra tags that are sold, so just a little background.
Any other discussion? All those in favor with aye.
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 And opposed? Motion carries. Item nine, elected officials' compensation for April of 2024 to April of 2026, term for county board supervisor.
This is Resolution 169-2022-2024, submitted by the Human Resources Committee.
Moved by Soslevich. Second by Dubek. Discussion. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor with aye.
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 And opposed?
Aye.
Those.
Three correct, Supervisor Maresi, Shabelsky, and Honel? Okay.
Motion carries. Item 10, elected officials' compensation for April 2024 to April of 2026, term for county board chair.
This is Resolution 170-2022-2024, submitted by the Human Resources Committee.
Moved by Lattic. Second by Soslevich. Discussion. Supervisor Maresi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'll be voting against this, and the reason why is because payment to our county board chair as a position is kind of like the last vestige of an era before Portage County had a county executive. It's from a time when the county board chair was the county administrator, in a way, when that position actually deserved a salary because of the work that they were doing. In today's, you know, era of shrinking budgets and where every penny counts, I believe that this money could be spent better elsewhere. Back when the county executive position was created by the voters, we decided that we wanted to have an elected official to do the administrative duties. And currently, it seems that we have a, like a co-mingling of duties amongst the chair and the county executive in administrative roles. So to me, paying a handsome salary to the county executive and to the county board chair to do essentially the same work is a redundancy. We have a county executive for a reason. That executive gets paid a very good salary. So I'm not sure how to approach this in terms of compensation for the county board chair, if it's the same as committee chairs, but I'll be voting against the pay raise and then hopefully having further discussion in HR about eliminating that salary altogether.
We do have amendment to make on this, a correction in numbers. What was in the original packet, you may have gotten email this afternoon with corrected numbers, was the per diems for 416 of 2024, 11 of 2025, and 11 of 2026. And those numbers were not correct. The number should read for 416 2024 is $60.1364. For 11 of 2025, those numbers should read 61.0384. And for 11 of 2026 is 62.8696. So I'll put that on the floor as an amendment. Second by Barry Chakowski. Discussion on the amendment. Seeing no discussion on the amendments, all those in favor with aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed?
Aye.
It's the second one. So back...
Supervisor Honel? Okay.
Could you repeat the amendment? Could you repeat what we're voting on here, please?
The amendment was just a correction to the per diem. In the packet was, if you look in the packet number, the first one for 416 of 2024 was That should read 60.1364. And then for 11 of 2025, it read 59.8417. It should read 61.0384. And for 11 of 2026, it was listed as 61.6370, and it should have read 62.8696, which puts it in line with all the other county supervisors. So back to the resolution as amended, any other discussion?
Who's the third one? Okay.
Do just a real call, or you want to?
I'm fine with doing, yeah, voice vote, that's fine.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion as amended, with aye.
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 And opposed?
Aye.
I have Supervisor Shabelsky, Supervisor Gifford, Supervisor Rockman...
Honel.
And Honel.
Maresi.
Is that it?
Maresi.
Five. I have, okay. No, did he? Okay.
You got Stan waving in.
Stan's waving his hand.
Stan, what do you need?
Mr. Chairman, is Jennifer Josie there?
Yes, she is.
Question for her. I believe, and maybe I forgot, but I believe that when the county executive came in, the salary for the county board chairman was lowered because of the fact that we do have a executive at that time. Is that true, Josie?
This is true.
I believe that is true. It was.
I believe it to be so, but I'm looking at Laura, do you recall? Like, that was a long time ago, Stan.
I know, I know that. But we're looking at trying to lower it, where it has, it already has been lowered, and I don't know, people know what the county board chair does, but to me, he does a lot.
That question was asked at the HR Committee meeting, and I believe it was 27,000, I could look at it quick, but I think it was 27,000 before the county executive and went to 20,000 when they had the county executive, and the per diem was added just the last term.
Thank you. Next item, item 11, revision to Portage County Ordinance Section 3.11, County Human Resource Policy 3.11.9.7, sick leave, sick leave conversion.
This is Resolution 171-2022-2024, submitted by the Human Resources Committee.
Did you announce the results of that last vote on that as amended?
Yeah.
Moved by Maresi, second by Gifford. Discussion. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor with aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Item 12, revision to Portage County Ordinance 3.11, County Human Resources Policy 3.11.9.2, health insurance.
This is Resolution 172-2024, excuse me, 2022-2024, submitted by the Human Resources Committee.
Moved by Maresi. Second by Dubek. Discussion. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor with aye.
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 And opposed? Motion carries. Item 13, approving and authorizing health source solutions as Portage County's wellness vendor effective January 1, 2024.
This is Resolution 173-2022-2024, submitted by the Human Resources Committee.
Moved by Shabelsky, second by Maresi. Discussion. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor with aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed? Motion carries. Item 14, authorizing the 2023 budget amendments and transfers.
This is Resolution 174-2022-2024, submitted by the Finance Committee. This resolution requires a two-thirds supermajority vote.
Moved by Soick, second by Lattic. Discussion. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor with aye.
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 And opposed? Motion carries. Item 15, approving and authorizing the 2024 to 2027 ambulance service provider agreement between Portage County and the city of Stevens Point.
This is Resolution 175-2022-2024, submitted by the Public Safety Emergency Management Committee.
Moved by Madine, second by Soslevich. Discussion. Seeing no discussion, all in favor with aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed? Motion carries. That'll take a motion to adjourn. Moved by Supervisor Chakowski, second by Splinter. All in favor with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We are adjourned.
First wife chair for the media any day he wants.
A video of this meeting is available for viewing on the city's website, StevensPoint.com/videos.